Hello, everybody. We would like to get started and be respectful of your time. My name's Heather Saylor. I'm with the Planning Department at the city. As you know, we've hired ZoneCo to update our zoning code, and it's been a several-month process that's been, you know, really getting in the weeds and talking about issues that we think need updated. With us tonight is Sean Suter from ZoneCo. He is here virtually, obviously. We did have Nolan, who was going to be here in person, but unfortunately, he became ill and could not travel here for obvious reasons. So we're glad to still have Sean here. I did bring some handouts. So Ms. Judy Ennis over here, she has a handout of the presentation, a copy. We also have a copy of the webpage. So the zoning code update, we have a webpage totally devoted to the zoning code. So you can look at the actual proposed zoning map. You can interact with the map. It shows you your current zoning and proposed zoning. And also, the YouTube presentation from tonight will be there along with the paper presentation. So again, there's a lot of good information there along with comments. You can type comments into the page also. We also have a proposed zoning map that you've seen online, but there's a larger copy here on the table also up front. We can make notes on that if we need to. And again, any questions, we will answer those too. We hope to do that at the end of the presentation. It's very critical that we hand you a microphone because in YouTube land, they won't hear you, and neither will Sean. So again, right in the microphone. Don't scream out. That's not going to help us. So again, we appreciate you being here, though. And I think that's it for the handouts. I want to have Sean get started to get to the meat of the, what we're going to talk about tonight. Thanks, Sean.
Thank you, Heather. Thanks, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Probably too well. It's probably like echoing throughout there. So good to be with you again. We saw you a few months ago in person. Sorry, we can't be there in person tonight. It's always our preference, and that was our plan. But you know how the germs are, so unfortunately, we couldn't be. But hope to see you again soon in person. I'm going to share the screen for the PowerPoint presentation, which is actually a PDF. If you remember, I just want to go through a little bit of where we've been and where we're going, and then we'll talk about the purpose of tonight's meeting. And that really is to go through the remainder and get your comments on the remainder of the code. Last time we met, we talked about the map, the new districts, and we went through the new districts and kind of explained their purpose and some of the dimensional standards. And tonight, we're going to go through the other sections of the code that we have drafted. And that includes uses. And we're not going to go through it in painstaking detail, but we want to touch on it, make sure you understand what we're proposing and how it works. And we'll go through that. So again, my name is Sean Suter, Lead Principal, founder of ZoneCo. Nolan is ill tonight, otherwise he'd be there in front of you. So instead, you get me tonight. The code rewrite started, obviously, with your comprehensive plan a few years ago and has led to this draft. Really, the plan is the basis for the code. The code is the implementation of the plan. So that's where we are. The diagnostic report was completed, where we looked at your existing code, went through each section, scored it against the community goals in the comprehensive plan, and really illuminated where the current code is getting in the way of achieving those goals or where it's working to promote those goals. We provided an administrative draft, which we've worked through in great detail with the staff. And then we are here now with this public review draft. And that's where we are getting comment from all of you and members of the public on what we've come up with here. The next step, after we go through this process, which is, we'll talk about next steps in this process, but the final stop on the journey is the adoption draft. Once everybody's comfortable that we have this where it needs to be. The goals of the new code were to simplify it, modernize it, make it easier to use, to understand clear and consistent provisions rather than inconsistent and maybe ambiguous provisions, to remove barriers to new businesses coming in, to really bolster the walkable urban center and the walkable neighborhoods that you have through a better land use and building form regulations to create the gateway, which was adopted already and is part of your existing code, which we worked on at the very beginning of the project, the BG Gateway. And really, to make sure that we're covering all housing options that are needed in Bowling Green, the whole continuum of housing. Where one goal is to maintain neighborhoods and then, obviously, to make a healthy community that's walkable and has access to green space, parks, and recreation. This is your existing map with all your existing zones that you're familiar with. There are a lot of them. This is what we call a Euclidean zoning code. That is a traditional zoning code that goes back some decades. It's really focused on use segregation. So we've worked to more closely align your zoning with development patterns. And you can start to see that in this proposed zoning map that you should have a copy of at your table, at least. A large zoning map that you should have a copy at each table. It shows you the number of zones and districts that we are proposing, and that's a consolidated number that are more intuitive. They reflect the development pattern, the unique districts of the city, how the city actually works together rather than just simple use segregation. So you can really see that here. This is the downtown, and then you have the walkable urban neighborhood around it. You can see the single-family residential neighborhoods, the university. It all starts to show up on the map, and it starts to reflect the way the development patterns have developed over time. So we went through that last time. The first article in the code is the introduction to using the code. It's a lot of setup, legal required information, the code roadmap, nothing too exciting. We talked last time about Article 2, which were the districts and zones, and that really is the meat, a large part of the meat of the code, where we set up our zones, our districts, and we set forth standards in each. And that is really important to review that along with the map, which we did last time. And then, and here are, again, those districts and zones. So you can see them more intuitively named to reflect what is going on within them, both use-wise and development pattern-wise and geographically. You can see that there. So uses. So we got into uses. And one important change is that we have a use table that I think the goal is that it's very easy to use. And so you can see on the use table that we've created the zones at the top here, and then the uses on this axis on the left here. And then whether it's permitted or conditional, it's going to show P for permitted, C for conditional, P A for permitted accessory use. So we identify the accessory uses. And if it's blank, that means it's not permitted. So we've gone through all of your existing uses in your code. We've consolidated those into new, some of those into new uses. We've left others the way they are, and we've created some new uses that don't exist in your code. For example, artisan manufacturing is a use that, you know, people didn't talk about much 10, 20, 30, 40 years ago. That is something that people talk about more today. So we've included those types of uses into the use table as well. And that's just one of those things where you have to kind of go through line by line and match it up with the map and say, okay, well, this is in, you know, this zone or this district, and professional offices are there, and they're permitted by right. Does that make sense? So we've done that. Staff has reviewed it. And those of you who are inclined to take that exercise on yourself, we welcome it. We hope you will do that and provide us any feedback because as you go through this, you may say, wow, I don't know if that makes sense here or that maybe we should add this here, or maybe that should be a permitted use rather than a conditional use, or vice versa, et cetera. So that's an important piece of the puzzle, and I hope some of you have already done some of that, taken a look at this, and are prepared to give us some feedback on that, either tonight or after the meeting or later on in writing to the staff or however. What, these are the, you know, each of these is defined in the glossary, which is at the end of the code. This is all set up in Article 2, so should be pretty easy to use. And then there are, beyond the use table, there are specific uses, okay, that we call out, that require special consideration. So for example, three of them, Bed and Breakfast Inn is an example. The Corner Store is another example. And an accessory use that would be pulled out and have additional regulations around it are accessory dwelling units. We can talk about those and certainly answer your questions about those. But there are a number of other uses. Adult entertainment businesses, which exist in your code now, carry forward, have to, airport, cemetery, nursing home. There's a lot of uses that you can't just say permitted or conditionally permitted without adding in some regulations to address the impact of those uses. So that's what we've done there. And you can see that as an example, you know, Bed and Breakfast Inn, Corner Store, and it, you know, tells you what can happen there, where it can be, et cetera. Accessory dwelling units is a new concept. A lot of communities are looking at adding these. It does a lot of things, including create additional options for housing. They used to be called mother-in-law suites or granny flats, all kinds of different names. But really, the name now is accessory dwelling unit or accessory living unit, ADU or ALU. And what generally we find is that we're trying to add in some housing options and allow people to either have their child move back but not live in the house, maybe live in the accessory unit, have a parent live on the property with them, they can look after, and that kind of thing, and utilize portions of the property for living that's not in the principal unit. So this is accessory, though. It is not standalone. It has to be accessory to a principally permitted residential dwelling. It can only be used for, you know, one person, I believe, is what we have in here. Do I have that in here? One person, I think. Or a couple. I'm not sure exactly what it is. And we're not looking to, you know, fill this up with, you know, six or eight people. It's a maximum, we've got in here of 1,200 square feet, which, you know, is a decent size. And then it has to be detached from the principal. If it's detached from the principal structure, it can't exceed the height of the principal structure. So it really has to be accessory. It has to be located in the rear yard, has to be screened because, you know, we don't want to impose on the neighbors by having someone living in the backyard or they're, you know, adjacent to their property, et cetera. So those are things we can talk about, but generally, that's the concept of an accessory dwelling unit. And so you'll see that as you look through Article 3, that there are some uses that we've called out with special regulations tied to them to address their special impacts. Generally, applicable standards are in Article 4. It's a really, also really meaty part of the code, an important part of the code. It addresses things like off-street parking, including parking pads and driveways. How do we address front yard parking? You know, we want people to park on paved surfaces that are generally leading to some garage or some space. We don't want people parking all over the property, and I'm sure you experienced that, especially in some of the student neighborhoods of the city. We want to address bicycle parking because that's a big deal. We want Bowling Green to be a bike-able community as much as possible. And so we want to require that people accommodate bicycles as well as automobiles, loading and unloading, of course. Important to include regulations around that so it's not disruptive or unsightly. Drive-throughs, a very interesting and evolving issue with COVID is the drive-through, the rejuvenation of the drive-through. How do we handle that as more and more people want, or businesses would like to have vehicular drive-throughs, fences, screening, street trees, buffering, outdoor lighting. And of course, my favorite topic, which is signs. People really get excited about signs. And so we've tried to lay out sign types and identify where they're allowed and what district, and then to propose some uniform standards around them so that we do get, you know, a nice uniform set of aesthetically pleasing and yet effective signage in Bowling Green. You don't have kind of a mishmash. Article 5 is the section on non-conformities, largely a legal section about vested rights and whether, you know, if the law changes while you're using a property a certain way, whether you can continue to use it that way, whether you can expand it, enlarge it, all that kind of thing, abandonment. That has to do with vested property rights, so that's a fun read. Administration and procedures. This is really a critical section of the code. And what we've tried to do here, we really haven't made any big changes to the way your procedures work. That's things like, how do I get a variance? How do I appeal something? How do I deal with the conditional use? All that kind of stuff. What we've done, though, is reorganize it, put a summary chart so that you can hopefully take a look and say, well, I'm looking to do this. Who do I have to apply to? Who do I have to go to for a hearing? And hopefully, lay that out. Instead of those provisions being scattered throughout the code, we put them in one place so that they can be easily referenced if you're looking to do something from a zone change for variance, get a conditional use approval, appeal, et cetera. And there's an example of the zoning code decision chart, which just says, you know, here's who you submit the variance application to. Goes to the planning director. The decision is by the zoning board of appeals, and that's a quasi-judicial decision, meaning that that's going to be a record appeal versus a legislative decision, which is a non-record-based decision. So I'll try to help clarify some of that. And then we have the glossary of terms. Really, again, a critical part of the code because we want our key terms in the code to be defined so that, you know, there's no ambiguity around them, no uncertainty. Ambiguity and uncertainty creates potential legal challenges and indefensibility when it comes to zoning. So we want to make sure that our uses are defined, our key terms are defined. And you'll see that we have a relatively extensive section of definitions in alphabetical order so that it's an easy reference. You run across a term in the document, and you say, what does that mean? You can easily come back to the glossary and find its meaning. And that's the code. In its entirety, the draft code, I should say. So we've talked about the introduction. We've talked about the districts and zones, really meaty part of the code, the standards. Then we have the use tables and the specific use standards. We have generally applicable regulations that are applicable to no matter what zone or district you're in throughout Bowling Green, you know, parking standards and signage standards and fences, all that kind of stuff. We've talked about non-conformity section, the administration of procedures section, and then the glossary. And that's, that's the code. Where do we go from here? Obviously, we're here tonight to get as many comments from you as possible. We're continuing with the staff from the city to compile those comments and incorporate them into the next draft. I think we will have another meeting coming up here of the public about popular topics based on, you know, where we get comments. Accessory dwelling units is probably a good example of that, or might warrant another meeting. We'll make revisions based on all the feedback that we get. And then we will start moving towards adoption and produce a draft that incorporates all the public feedback and gets us closer to something that can be considered as legislation. So that's where we are. Look forward to your comments and questions tonight, and appreciate your attention and time. Thank you.
Sean, I just wanted to clarify that we did not have the public document for Sections 4, 5, and 6 out yet. Staff is still reviewing those. We also wanted to make sure that we were capturing the main items or comments that we hear from 1, 2, 3, and 7. So that's what we're here tonight is to really gauge that initial feedback. So if there's any questions, comments, we will be happy to hand you the microphone. Joe, are I?
Hey, how you doing? I've got a question on the accessory units that you were talking about. Is that going to be primarily owner-occupied? Or is that basically any of those areas? Because it looks like it's in the residential pedestrian.
Right. So that makes sense because that is of a development pattern that has a lot of those accessory structures, tends to be from the teens, 20s, 30s, that time period. So you have detached garages, things like that, that can be perhaps used or converted into accessory dwelling unit. But typically, yes, an accessory dwelling unit would require an owner to reside on the property. Sometimes codes will say that the owner of the property must reside in the principal structure and/or sometimes it just says that the owner of the property has to live on the property so that it doesn't turn into a multi-unit property. It's truly an accessory to residents.
To add, I gave you copies at each table of the draft. Page 49 has the specific conditions for the ADUs. So that may help you, David. And just a reminder about ADUs, why this was such an important topic that came up is that is a recommendation of the future land use section of the master plan and it's a recommendation of the community action plan. So we felt this really was a critical topic to bring forth to community to have further discussions because we know there's positives and negatives. So again, we want it to be a community conversation. Any other questions?
How about on the map? Anybody, since we talked through the districts the last time and the map, see anything that's maybe not exactly the way it ought to be?
I know that's just probably a preliminary map, but I know when we got online to look at it, it's difficult if you don't know the streets. And the streets are very difficult to read because they're in a very narrow area. So you can't see the street names on those, on the new zone map. Not the paper one, but the one online.
So that's a great question. If you do go to the zoning code webpage, towards the bottom is the interactive map. If you go to the map, zoom in closer, it will show you the road names. So Lori here has an example of that. It's a lot of data to capture so, and see on these maps. So I think that interactive map, if you do go online, it'll be very helpful. But that's a great question to point out.
So I didn't review the ADUs prior to the meeting, but as we started talking about that, I was curious. If the owner is living in the main building and maybe some of the family is living in the other, what's if it changes hands and it then becomes a rental to whatever? Do we have any concerns about that?
Um, so the question is, should, I think what you're asking really is, should there be a provision or requirement that there be a relation, some sort of familial relation maybe between the occupant of the ADU and the principal structure so that it's not just a rental property? That, that's something that we may be able to do. Some places will do that. It's a little tricky, but relative to tying it to a blood relation. But generally speaking, if you have limits on the occupancy of the ADU, limits on the occupancy of the permitted principal residence, you're, and you require owner occupancy of at least one of those, then you're limiting the ability for it to become much more than one potential rental unit. But you could try to limit that even further by trying to tie it into some relationship between the residents. So that's, those are really policy questions for the city. You know, how do you want to handle those? It's a great discussion. Are you okay if, you know, I own a home, let's say, and I have a garage that's been converted into apartment, and I rent it to a student, graduate student? Is that, is that okay? You know, or do we want to limit it to, you know, it really has to be for grandma? That kind of thing. So it just depends on your appetite for that type of use. Is there a, oh, sorry.
Good evening. When you were putting together the zoning map.
When you were putting together the zoning map, do you consider it our most current proposed land use map, the one from our 2014 document?
Yes.
So there are some discrepancies here, and I'm just curious as to your rationale. For example, some areas on the proposed land use map in our 2014 plan that are anticipated or projected as residential, but on this map are projected as the IE version of industrial. So and that's on the northwest side of town. I'm just curious if that was an intentional change, if that was input you got from the city somehow, or?
I'd have to look exactly where you're referring to, no. Let me open up to the map here. I can maybe help address that.
Well, I would add, Sean, that I think more of the intent was the map was to closely relate what already was going on on the ground. It was less about the land use map because we were trying to really match things that were nonconforming, but yet not change a lot. I know it's not a straight answer, but I think most people's zoning matches what they have now. So if your house is zoned R2, it's likely zoned R1 now because R1 replaced R2.
Yeah, I think, I think both were taken into account, right? So when you're doing these zoning maps, it's important to respect what's going on on the ground there, but also to reflect the desired development patterns. So some areas are, have more opportunity for change than others. I'm not, I'm not sure exactly on that particular location, but if you.
Well, I guess, I guess the exact location isn't all that relevant because I guess my point, part of my point is I think that collectively between our planning commission and our city council, we've got to get our heads together and decide what we want the zoning map to look like. And we're not locked into what it is today. We're not even locked into what the proposed land use map was in 2014. That's just our current document. And personally, what I'd like to see is that we get it right in the zoning code. We put language in the code that very specifically supersedes anything that was published prior. We put all of that behind us and we move forward with one clear document. And I just point out to the, you know, to everybody listening that this is still malleable. We can change it however we want to. So thank you.
Absolutely. Yep, that's what we're looking for is, is that feedback. You know, this is, this is going to influence and govern land use for quite some time going forward. So we'll make sure it's reflective of the vision. Is there, are there any uses that you get requests for or asked about a lot in your work that have popped up recently that maybe is not, are not in the code? I want to make sure that we address those. We've tried to anticipate new types of uses, but anything that you can think of, that you hear about that maybe isn't currently addressed? Anyone have any?
Is it okay? Great. In years past, there's been a lot of discussion about maximum building heights, specifically in like commercial zones, general commercial B3 and what I still call like the B5. Has there been some discussion about any changes to the previous building or height restrictions?
What feedback have you been getting about them? They're too low, too high? Specifically, just sorry, I understand.
I'm sorry, too low or too high? This was too low, too high? Oh, too, too low, too low. I'm specifically asking whether or not in your experience, does it make sense for us to think about raising the limits that we had in your experience?
Yeah, absolutely. And if you're getting development pressure and people want additional height and it's in a, in a place that where that's not going to create any significant impacts and that it's context appropriate, like maybe say the downtown, then I do think it's absolutely appropriate to increase that. The other thing you can do, sometimes height is determined by how you measure it. So a lot of people like these rooftop decks and things nowadays, and that requires a stair penthouse or an elevator penthouse on top, right? And so sometimes that would exceed the height limit and preclude you from using the rooftops. So I think as long as we measure to, you know, the top of that, rather than just going to the top of the roof line, you know, and include architectural features, things like that, that can increase the height a little bit. But there's no right or wrong answer on, on the height. It just depends on, you know, what the community and the market is desiring in the context. I mean, you're, you're a small city and so, you know, there aren't skyscrapers, right? But, you know, could you do six, eight stories? Sure, I think so.
Sure, but there's, there's obviously got to be a limit. And I guess I bring it up because, you know, this is the opportunity for us to really look at that. And I'd encourage us to be open to, you know, something different than what we had. And, you know, a lot of the, the new construction for some of these, you know, these areas we're talking about, they're mixed uses and, you know, mixed use needs more space and it's got to go vertical. So I'd encourage us to be open to expanding what we have a little bit right now.
Yeah, we definitely did that in the Bowling Green Gateway District. And I'm trying to remember, I'm just looking here, what we ended up with there. But we were pretty generous, I believe, on the height there. And so you could, you could do that in the other districts as well. Because those first floor heights on the mixed use buildings you're talking about tend to be anywhere from 16 to 20 feet. So you got to give, give room for that first floor, floor to floor, which is, you know, like I said, 16, 20 feet plus multiple stories above that. So it ends up getting higher than maybe what you have in the past.
I would also add one more thing. Mark's experiences in the B5 transitional business district, which would no longer exist because that was only 35 feet maximum. So totally understand that and it would go away if this did get approved.
Hi, Sean. Quick question, and I apologize if this has been covered before, but are any of these specific zones zoned for like the opportunity zone tax incentives for businesses to come in?
No, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't do that. No, I think those are determined by, I'm not exactly sure how the opportunities zones are determined. It's an economic determination based on, you know, income and that kind of thing. But no.
It was determined by, excuse me, Sean, census tracts.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah. So we do have one already. Mm-hmm. Yes, it's, basically it goes to Fairview, north of Worcester, Tupoe, to Thurston. It would be a mix of zoning, so you're looking at some of that pedestrian residential and central business and then some of the university-related zoning. So, yeah. You're welcome.
Just to follow up on that height question that Mark asked, I think one of the interesting things about kind of consolidating some of these zones is it's great and it's a lot more user-friendly, but like the innovation and employment zone kind of encompasses a lot of different things. And so we see that some of our industrial customers are wanting, you know, maybe 80 feet in terms of height. Now, that's not all of them, but we do get some requests for that. So that's one of those things where I'm not sure if that's better to handle through, you know, requesting a variance for that since it's not all the time. But I just kind of wanted to point that out, that that might be more applicable to kind of more of the industrial users than some of the other things that are covered in this specific zone. So I don't know how you handle those sort of differences.
Yeah, the max, max height that we have anywhere in the city in this proposed draft is 60 feet. So that gives you around a six-story building. Now, I take that back. The, the gateway does not prescribe a structure height maximum, so that's more wide open. But as far as the other districts and zones, it goes to a 60. So, yeah, I mean, that's, that's another policy decision. Do we want to code for the unusual circumstance? Do we want to code for kind of the median situation? Do we want to, you know, go 60 feet max so that we control that height in these zones? But then, you know, if somebody wants 80 feet, they can always come in for that variance if they can prove why they have some sort of practical difficulty in meeting the 60-foot maximum. So again, that's, that's sort of a judgment call. I don't know if there's a right or wrong answer to it. If you're getting lots of inquiries for 80-foot buildings and there's something in the market that's driving that, then I would say code for 80 feet so you don't have a bunch of hearings. If you don't think it's going to impact anybody anyway, what's the point in dragging them through variance hearings? So arguments both ways on that.
Hi, Sean. I have a quick question. I was kind of surprised not to see massing and facade and building design standards like in the Gateway District and the Central Business District. If you guys could talk a little bit about that, like specifically the transparency requirement would seem important there. So.
No, that's, that's good feedback. I think most of your business districts built out, but where there's opportunities for infill, I think that's good feedback. We could certainly incorporate at least transparency. I don't know. And you can go, you can add material requirements, other, other types of design standards in the Central Business District if that's something that you think is necessary.
That we talked about that a little bit internally. And with the new historic preservation ordinance, you know, that really does impact downtown potentially if that became designated locally. So there would be those standards in place. So that definitely was discussed. And of course, the gateway is our first kind of bite at the apple of having design standards and massing facade requirements. So we're kind of trying to ease ourselves because this is all new for us. So we thought gateway was a huge first step for us to get that passed. And then hopefully, you know, our next big project is there and we'll see what happens. So, but it's great feedback.
Yeah, and if that's the case where there's going to be a historic district, then you'd have historic district guidelines that would cover all of that in downtown.
Anybody else, anything?
Anything while we're together that relative to the procedures, you know, that kind of thing that's working or not working, I should say not working currently that, that we should take a look at? Procedures, meaning, you know, how do I get a variance? Are there too many reviews and approvals? Could we streamline some, that kind of thing? Any of that? Anyone have any input on that? Or it seems like it's working. It's pretty tidy what you have now. Pretty typical too of an Ohio city, so that's fine. I just didn't know if there's anything. How about signs? I know we're not specifically talking about that tonight, but I'm just curious while we're together. Anybody have any thoughts on signs? What's working, what's not? Digital signs, that kind of stuff?
My group, Sean.
Yeah, I'm trying to elicit some.
Usually with zoning, it's like, oh, everybody's going to talk and.
Right, right. And because you hear about these things where people come in with the applications and it turns into a big deal. What are the, what are the hot button issues that we should be drilling down into for future public meetings? Oh, I saw a hand go up.
Yeah, one of the things I'm looking at, it ties in with the ADUs where it talks about the occupancy and 150.59 is like one unit, two unit dwellings. The alpha just says no dwelling unit, including an accessory building, excuse me, accessory dwelling unit may have XXX residence. Do you guys plan on fleshing that out? And what are you basing that occupancy off of?
Yes, that is something that we're going to be drilling down into. That is a hot button issue, as you all know. There have been, there's been some cases or at least one big case recently involving occupancy. And so we are working with your city attorney to come up with that language and that, those numbers so that we can, you know, make sure that that's going to be legally defensible. So that's why those are currently sort of placeholders. So we know that's a hot button issue. What other?
I'm concerned about the residential pedestrian and the uses that can be made in those, in that housing and the accessory dwellings and the expansion of, potential expansion of businesses in that area.
And you're, that's the area around Central Business District, right? The traditional neighborhoods?
Yes.
pedestrian, yeah. Okay. And so if we look at the use table, we look at that, just while we're together here, let's see, pedestrian, residential, the PR. Accessory dwelling unit would be a conditional use, so that would require a hearing. Adult group home permitted. See what else? A bar. Additional.
Think there were beauty parlors in there?
Barbershop, beauty shop, or day spa.
Does that mean that in the middle of a residential block, somebody could convert their house to a beauty parlor?
In that PR zone, it would be principally permitted, yeah. Bed and breakfast in. Let's see, a corner store on the corner.
Neighborhood commercial.
Neighborhood commercial. You're saying to sprinkle that in?
Sorry.
On the corners, maybe?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good, it's a good thought. I'm just looking through here. Daycare. My, my, my thinking here is that that area is sort of transitional from the CBD out to the single-family residential areas. And so there is a little bit of a mix now of things going on in there, but I definitely take your point and we'll take a fresh look at that. And maybe, that maybe it makes sense to do some more neighborhood commercial in some of those nodes. So good comment.
Another question. Why is it called university residential? It sounds.
University-oriented residential?
They're very limited in size and they can have lots of units on it and it just sounds like a ghetto.
Well, there is a, is a part of your city that is university adjacent, that is sort of focused on, on student living. And so we thought that since that development pattern was alike, we would, we would create a special district for it. And that way we could regulate within it, especially to those uses, rather than trying to fit it into a regular single-family zone or multifamily zone.
Add to that, that we do have that same zoning classification now. It's just called R5.
Good point. Yep. What else? Anything else that is burning that we want to make sure to address? I know occupancy is a big one. ADUs is is kind of part of that conversation. So that'll be a big conversation. Doesn't seem like signs really bothering anybody. Height is interesting conversation.
Sean, how do you recommend that conversation like the ADU conversation moves forward?
Well, we can, if if that is a conversation that people want to have and talk about, I think it would be good to get questions sent to you directly so that you could send them to us and then we can do another one of these sessions where we just talk about that. Or maybe it's a small session, a small group session or something like that instead of a big room. People might feel more free to kind of just talk. So, yeah, happy to happy to drill down in that and come up with some regulations that make sense for for Bowling Green. Or it might just be decided that, you know, that's not a use that that we want in the code and we don't do it. So but it's it's worth talking through.
Yeah, Sean, I do have a question about signs. Are there any communities trying to or attempting to regulate the brightness of these new style signs?
Yes.
Technology now is the point where you can have anything you want in terms of brightness.
Yeah, absolutely. Most of the sign codes that deal with digital signage does have a maximum luminance. And that's just obviously for safety purposes mainly, but also for nuisance purposes, people live nearby and whatnot. So, yeah, we do think it's measured nits or lumens. I think it's nits.
I would say that I certainly have an interest in exploring that as we move forward with signage because I think that can get out of hand if it's not under, it's not regulated.
Mm hmm. Absolutely. How are the robots working? Last time I was up there, there are robots roving all around your city? Anybody plow one over yet?
They've definitely multiplied since you've been here, I think.
Oh, geez. Any land use issues with those? Or I guess they just use the right away, huh? Good. It's interesting. It's pretty cool.
Any other questions? Well, again, I would encourage people to use the webpage to enter comments, email the city, the planning office, call. I think we've tried to provide a lot of means to get ahold of us with any concerns or questions. Happy to help. Planning Commission meetings, we have lobby visitation. Happy to have you there, too. There's a lot of opportunity, I feel, to further discuss and review and think about these issues, envision your street, envision where businesses are, you know, what changes do you foresee that would improve what we do now? Anything else, Sean, for the good of the order?
No, I think we've covered a lot of ground in a short time tonight. So thank you all for your time and attention.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Good night.
You, too.